Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is February 21st, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Hayden.
We pray for and thank Cape Coral staff for their passion, hard work, and tireless commitment to the community. We pray for and thank our first responders for their courage and dedication to making this city one of the safest in the country. We pray for and thank our numerous nonprofits whose caring benefits thousands of people. And we pray for and thank members of our community for believing in this spectacular city. Please join me on the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Or do I have a motion to adopt the agendas presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is community recognitions. Award, Mr. City Manager.
Good evening. Tonight's community recognition award goes to Melissa Blaine. I'm pleased to present the award to Melissa, who is one of Cape Coral's stellar swim athletes. Melissa recently competed in the Florida High School Athletic Association's Class 3A State Championships, finishing second in the 200-meter individual medley and fifth in the 500-meter freestyle. Melissa swims for Cape Coral High School and holds a state championship title for the 200-meter individual medley. While swimming for Cape High, she also brought home multiple championship titles at the county, district, and regional levels while competing in the 200-meter individual medley, the 500-meter freestyle, 200-meter medley relay, and 400-meter freestyle relay. Melissa also participates in competitive club swimming, where she has achieved many other accolades, including becoming the Florida Swim Champion in the 1650-meter freestyle and the 200-meter breaststroke. Melissa is dual-enrolled at Cape Coral High School and Kaiser University, upholding a 4.0 GPA while participating in the National Honor Society, and she is committed to swimming for the Ohio University.
Congratulations on your recognition. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is presentation of city employees' years of service. This time, I would like to recognize the following employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city of Cape Coral. I want to thank them for their time, commitment they have shown with our department. We are grateful to have loyal employees like yourself. I want to thank them for their contribution to the city and all the efforts they put into their daily responsibilities to make our city a better place. Thank you for being such a valuable member to our team. Madam City Clerk, once I make my way down to the front of the dais, would you please read the name of the recipient along with the years of service who is currently in the office? As your name is called, please come forward to receive your award and take a quick picture. Thank you.
CAD Design Specialist, Gabe Nappi, Public Works Department, 34 years of service.
Good afternoon, Council. Damon Grant, interim Public Works Director, here on behalf of the Public Works team to congratulate Gabe for achieving 34 years. Incredible with the city of Cape Coral. Gabe is a CAD Design Specialist with the Department of Public Works. Obviously, we value his commitment to excellence and the work that he has done. He's established many long-lasting friendships and coworkers over the years. Outside of work, Gabe was a student pilot, enjoys attending air shows and aviation. After he retires, he's going to be enjoying time with his wife and traveling, attending car shows and concerts, and spending time with their two grandchildren. Gabe will be retiring at the end of February, and we appreciate Gabe for his many wonderful years of service with the city. Thank you.
Okay, item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from the regular meeting, February 7th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Just one other thing, too, before we get started. Make sure that we address all of council as a body, as a governing body, and not any one particular individual. Go ahead.
My name is William Ulrich. Right for instance, this is not the first time I have stood here addressing the city council regarding the plans to change J.C. Park from a peaceful, spiritual neighborhood park into a commercialized park. And I am certain it will not be the last time I will be standing here asking questions such as, is it true that part of the plan for commercializing J.C. Park includes removing the median on Beach Parkway and turning it into a four-lane road with a stoplight at one of the intersections? Is it true the traffic study for the new J.C. Park says traffic will not be a problem, even though someone counted more than 220 cars during a community concert, which is certainly fewer than what can be expected on a daily basis after J.C. Park is turned into a carnival park? Where are all the extra cars going to park? On the grass? In the streets? On people's lawns? This is ridiculous. You have no good planning on this. What you have are idiots ignoring a major parking problem. Given that a carnival park will bring in many more cars, and the plan is to have only 132 off-street parking spaces, is the city ready to admit it lied when it said it is spending $1 million a year trimming and controlling the Australian pine trees in J.C. Park when city records show no money is being spent on the maintenance and removal of Australian pines, other than for hurricane-related damage? As anyone can calculate, $1 million would pay for as many as 24 workers working full-time in J.C. Park, workers that are nowhere to be seen. Is it true the license for food and liquor was given to an existing bar and restaurant company without making the application process public and virtually excluding others by having a $25,000 nonrefundable application fee? We believe the city is lying to the people in public documents regarding the commercialization of J.C. Park and making inside deals with chosen businesses. So we are helping obtain signatures on two petitions that will reverse what the mayor and city council are doing. One is to reverse the 100% pay increases the mayor and city council members gave themselves after eliminating citizen oversight groups. The other is to stop the commercialization of J.C. Park, but the city is making it virtually impossible to set up petition tables in the park. So we are looking for an army of people, hundreds if not thousands, of volunteers to go to every legal voter in the city of Cape Coral to have everyone who wants to stop the problems the city is creating, including an increase in drunken driving. Sign the petitions. If you want to be a volunteer manager or are willing to knock on doors, let me know. Leave me a message at levedgeparkalone.com.
Yes, and we're talking about recalling the city council and the mayor, too, to do that in the vote. My job is to plan and get the thousands of people to knock on doors.
Thank you.
I am Smokin' Joe. I want to apologize. I had somebody ask me to speak about something else. I promise you, I will put that on my show on Cracker Culture on Rumble or Smokin' Joe Nation YouTube lately.
Before you get started, sir, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Smokin' Joe. My last name's Phillips, if you need to know it. All right. The First Amendment is often inconvenient, but that is beside the point. Inconvenience does not absolve the government of their obligation to tolerate speech. Quote from the U.S. Supreme Court by Anthony Kennedy. Speaking to the committee as a whole, I would like to see more leadership qualities, as was shown by the new committee member, Mr. Richard Carr, during the Cal meeting when the mayor ridiculed another committee member about his attire in front of the rest of the board, as well as it was also televised. Seems to me it's a bit hypocritical as the reason that you stopped me from speaking at the last meeting, sir. At the last meeting, Mayor Gunter, you made the comment that the people voted you into this seat. I want to point out, that is not completely accurate. You were placed in that seat by a political strategy company who controlled what the people knew about you, and you paid him thousands, I'm $50,000 to $60,000. I would also like to address the committee about your statement whether I'm eligible to vote in Cape Coral or not. First, that's none of nobody's business where I'm eligible to vote. I grew up in Cape Coral, lived here most of my entire life. Wherever I reside now is not irrelevant to you. I am a citizen of Lee County. Taxes from Lee County also are affected by the decisions made in Cape Coral. So I have every right to speak anywhere my money is being used. This shows the lack of understanding of how government resources are allocated and who all is actually affected when you decide to double your salary with a stipend. We have become aware that an elected official who has an extremely questionable, violent, and criminal past, we have the right to ask questions of that person. This is the very reason the founding fathers put into the Constitution the freedom of speech, not the freedom of speech you like, but the freedom of speech that may be offensive to you as well. I plan on releasing more information week after week until Mayor John Gunter resigns or the people have obtained enough signatures together to have him recalled. Revelations 21, verse 8, says, "As bad as murder, as bad as sexual immorality, as bad as sorcerers are." Note that God puts first, ahead of the line, the cowardly. I will never be known as a coward, but Mayor Gunter, you will be forever known as the coward you have proven to be, and you folks are following the coward. I'm Smokin' Joe. I love you, Florida, and I'll be back every time. Please have me arrested, please.
Good evening. I'm Tara Jenner, and I wanted to make a couple of comments. First and foremost, I'd like to correct you on how you guys lead the pledge. There's no pause between "one nation" and "under God." When you do that pause between those, you create a subordinate clause because of the verbal comma, and it places the nation under the flag rather than under God, and it changes the entire meaning. So it is "one nation under God," not "one nation, pause, under God." So I just encourage you all to consider that. Since you have microphones, you'll be able to be heard louder, and maybe you can encourage the rest of the people to learn this lesson that is, I think, very pertinent. The second thing I'd like to note is the observation made from the dais that we needed to address the board as a whole. Under the United States Constitution, it says that we have the right to redress our government for grievances. That means individual people need to know what the grievance is so that action can be taken in order to correct any errors that we perceive have been made. And under the Florida State Constitution, and I've mentioned this before, we have a right to instruct our government, and that's a proactive right. And again, there should be no prohibition for us to instruct individual people regarding what we think would be an appropriate course of action. So let me propose a potential course of action here. You've voted yourselves a stipend. Some of you have declined to vote because you've been in the bathroom, or you weren't yet on the board, or you did vote no but still took the stipend. So what I'm going to encourage you to do, since it's been a few weeks now, consider an entirely new motion to repeal and recall that stipend. It's often very challenging for individuals when they've taken a course of action to admit that they were wrong. It takes an awful lot of swallowing of pride and putting hubris aside. So I encourage you to all consider that. Mr. Carr, since you were not somebody who actually had a say in that vote, you might be a very appropriate person to bring that motion forward, given that you've declined the stipend. So I would encourage you to consider that, because aside from that, it may look as though you declined the stipend so that you have a better chance in your election coming up this summer. I'd like to thank all of you for giving me the time to speak, and I would also like you to consider and dig down deep and ask yourself whether you did go to that website, chrisannehall.com, K-R-I-S-A-N-N-E-hall.com, and look on her website under the search bar for the employment application, and look through the constitutional questions there. Do it as a self-assessment test, do it as a take-home test. And again, if you don't know the answer to the questions, feel free to call me, and I'll get you to the source documents to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hi. Mr. Mayor and Councilors, my name is Larry Gillis. I'm from the Sands Park area. I've been in Cape Coral since 2008. I want to bring to your attention House Bill 601, now pending in the Florida House, hasn't cleared the floor yet, I guess. And what it would do is to take away from cities and towns the right to citizen review boards for allegations of police misconduct and have those handled at the state level. I understand from an earlier conversation, I posted this online, so I won't read the text, but I understand that this provision would not apply to the city of Cape Coral. But my objection still stands, and that is that if you're interested at all in the principle of home rule, of local problems being resolved locally, then this body should object to that bill, even though it doesn't apply, I understand, to the city of Cape Coral. It does apply to Fort Myers, and they've got a real concern. My party, the Libertarian Party, had a meeting the other night, and the members from Fort Myers were really concerned about this. My major focus is on the home rule aspect. Where I come from, in New Hampshire, there's a very strong tradition of home rule. Local problems are dealt with locally by people who are intimately involved with the problem, and good things happen. My sense of this bill, I don't mean to be cynical, not at the age of 81, but my sentiment is that this means that the police misconduct complaints will go to Tallahassee to die. And I mean, in New Hampshire, we have the conquered conga. Down here, I'm sure you have the Tallahassee two-step, which is you send stuff to Tallahassee and then magically it just expires. And I think that police misconduct complaints should be heard locally. I guess that's, I'm repeating myself. The text of my submission was posted earlier, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I love you. I'm Sally Flash. I'm going to be talking about the J.C. Park as usual. I've been to two parks and two beaches this past week, to Rotary Park, Lakes Park, Captiva, and Sanibel Beaches. There were no bars at these parks or beaches, and yet there were many people out enjoying nature and the water. I've also been to Margaritaville on Fort Myers Beach. There was a bar on the upper level, open to the public, set far away from the water, with people at the bar, backs to the water, drinking instead of enjoying the beauty around them. All that way to come to the beach, and there they are at the bar. What a shame. J.C. Park is a very small park in relation to those other ones mentioned, embedded in a neighborhood of condos with 800 in residence in the winter. The park yesterday was busy with families, children on the playground, people sitting at benches, enjoying the sereneness of the park without a bar. With a flick of a pen, eight of you can determine the fate of this little neighborhood park. Either let it be, as thousands of us wish, or turn it into something like the Boathouse at the Cape Coral Yacht Club with a bar, customers who don't care about the park, the children playing, or its wildlife. We are afraid you will sell this little park out to the unsolicited bidder whose name has not been revealed. They who have enough money can get whatever they want, and to heck with all the little people who have one place in the Cape that they can call a water-view park. Eight of you can't decide. You can either say, "Well, life is not fair" to the thousands of us who love our park, or you can reconsider your plans, work with the people, which you should have done in the first place, and come up with park enhancements that we can all live with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Mealy, Southwest District 2, as a matter of fact. I need what I think is a simple answer. I watched optic cable being put in from Cape Coral Parkway down Pelican all the way to Eldorado. Took about a month, and I went over and finally, when they got near me and asked the crew, I said, "What are you doing?" And they said, "It's fiber optic for traffic signals." I don't know if you know the intersection, but I don't see traffic signals going in there. So I called 311, I mean, yeah, I called 311 because nobody knew where a traffic engineer was. I worked for a city for 30 years, and I dealt a lot with traffic and traffic design and stuff like that. And they said, "Somebody will call you. We can't find a traffic engineer." Next day, I got an email that said, "You may check the status for your request by visiting online service request portal listed above. Check on, sign in, set up an account." Being a guy born during dial phones and 50-foot cords, I kind of checked out at that point. So I came to the city. I asked two employees on the first floor down there, "Where can I find the traffic engineer?" They didn't know. So I went to city manager's office, had the same question. Very nice lady said, "Well, that's transportation over on Nicholas." So I went over and asked the two ladies inside, "Who can I talk to about if there are traffic controls and signals going in at Pelican and Eldorado?" They said, "We don't handle that. We only handle signs. FDOT handles where signals and such go." I said, "Well, I've had some experience. I'm here to tell you a half a million dollar three-phase signal isn't going to be handled by FDOT for the city of Cape Coral." So I went back and I told the ladies, I said, "That's not FDOT." They laughed at me. And they said, "Oh, well, then you need to go to the council because they know everything and they will give you the answers." Here I am. So how do I find out if, and I also got a note two days later that apparently there's like traffic roundabouts going in. One of those is supposed to be at Pelican and Eldorado. Being a traffic guy, I've never heard of a signal with a roundabout. So if anybody can give me the answers or tell me if there's a traffic engineer or where I can find out what's going on, I appreciate it.
Yeah, just have a seat in the back. We'll get a staff member to try to answer some of your questions. I said, "Just have a seat in the back. We'll have a staff member try to answer some of your questions."
My name is Bruce Smith. My wife and I live in the northwest section of Cape Coral. We're very concerned about the potential loss of potable water in this area. I have a handout.
You have to give it to the city clerk.
We feel there may be a diminishing water supply in the North Cape, where most residents depend on well water using the mid-Hawthorne aquifer. We also feel the Cape Coral Council has possibly underestimated this threat and responded with somewhat inadequate measures to deal with it, like simple lawn watering restrictions, can't wash your car, boat, that kind of thing. The enormous growth of new home construction in the North Cape area, which is tied to additional well drilling, poses a substantial threat to aquifer capability to meet the area's future drinking water needs. The city's utility extension program, the UEP, is moving too slow to counteract this problem, in our opinion. North Cape residents may be deprived of drinking water long before any relief from the UEP reaches us. I'm in North Sticks. I don't think we're even on the schedule for this yet. Cape Coral is sinking. Yes, you've heard this on the news media. It must be true. This is related to compaction, subsidence of the mid-Hawthorne aquifer. The aquifer subsidence of that aquifer in certain areas, and this is blamed in part, one theory is, by overpumping of this aquifer by residents in the north with their wells. This compaction that you're seeing cannot be reversed, according to science. Regardless of how much rainwater or whatever we have, that compaction is going to stay the same in that area. The water capacity in those compacted areas may be reduced. USGS study done in 2001 also talks about salinity in these areas, in the mid-Hawthorne aquifer. If this water capacity is reduced, salinity concentrations may increase, and those of other elements like magnesium, possibly at levels that would preclude the use of that aquifer area and drinking water source without treatment, expensive treatment, which residents can't really afford. Several recommendations here. The council should immediately impose a moratorium on the issuance of well-drilling permits in North Cape, especially in those areas where the UEP will not be available for several years. years.
Thank you, sir.
The rest of my recommendations are on here, including some studies that I think should undertake to deal with this.
Hi, my name is Rose Tom. You may remember me from Save the Mass Canal, Save Our Manatees. I'm here today to speak about the many problems, in my opinion, that we are facing. We have a city council and mayor that are not for the people. Instead, they ignore, don't get involved, or care about the concerns that we bring to their attention. The stipend is one example of it. It's quite a shame that power and greed is so in our face, not just here in our city, but in our so-called government, which is a complete clown show and quite the embarrassment for our country. I contacted one city member regarding why don't we have the capability during our meetings to show pictures and play videos on a smart TV, which we can cast directly from our phones to show everyone what is going on in our city? Maybe all of you can pitch in and upgrade to this with your stipend. Also, how about putting your stipend towards a buffer sound barrier wall for us who are dealing with the outrageous construction and noise with only more to come from the Tommy's Car Wash on Santa Barbara Boulevard? The owner is only putting up a landscape barrier. This is not acceptable. Both should be mandatory for this type of business. It's sad how city decisions, which are reckless, can ruin people's lives. The zoning change to commercial behind our backs when this land sits on top of a mass canal in residential homes was quite disturbing. We now see what you're all about, for you have never intervened on our behalf to help when you had many opportunities to do so. We want honest, caring people with common sense to make decisions, not decisions made on money, taxes, and greed. Quit wasting our tax dollars. Leave J.C. Park alone. Boycott Tommy's Car Wash on Santa Barbara Boulevard. In my opinion, this owner has no conscience or moral ethics to build a car wash on top of residential homes and a canal. After Hurricane Ian, we thought for sure the Army Corps would reject the permit for the canal fill-in at least, but no, that didn't happen either, and now we are in a flood zone. What is going on here? Enough.
Good afternoon, everybody. Anthony Karp, Cornwallis Neighborhood. I recognize a few of you up there. My former, the mayor, former councilperson, District 1, councilperson over there, too. We'd like to maybe have you come and talk to the friends of J.C. Park and really hear what they have to say. There's a lot of things I'd like to talk about, but I'm going to just focus on J.C. Park with my minimal three minutes. You know, you have people that come from all over the country that moved into the J.C. Park area. There's, what, 49 different associations there? These are people that worked all their life, and, you know, they come there, they move there for the specific reason, the way J.C. is, you know? And in doing so, there's going to be people that are going to follow after them. And, you know, there's a certain dynamic that already exists there, and they want to keep it that way. There's no need to change the dynamic of the way it is now. So, you know, that's why we've come here many times. You've heard a thousand different reasons why. We have people canvassing the whole city, all four corners and the center. We want J.C. Park to remain as it is. And there's people that love their place for the way it is. I have talked to hundreds, if not thousands, of people, and so have these people behind me, and they expressed their feelings. We've had thousands of petitions signed, all different types, from registered voters, from snowbirds, from people from around the world. And they said, "This is just a tiny little piece of serenity. Otherwise, you have to drive 45 minutes or an hour to go someplace else." So just, you know, leave it as it is. Listen to these people. You know, they're putting their time and effort into it when they should just be enjoying themselves, their later years. And it's not just the seniors, or it's also the younger families we've talked to that love their park the way it is. You've heard a lot of reasons. Again, I just want to focus on the park here. You know, you all, just do, you know, do your job. Reach out to the people. Spend time with them. Don't just take care of the developers. There's a lot to be done in the city. And, you know, like Ronald Reagan once said to Gorbachev, "Tear that wall down." Well, we say tear up the redevelopment plan. Stop it. Throw it away. Come out. We have plans of what, you know, we can improve the park just the way it is. There's other ideas that we have for it. Come and sit down, talk to us, and we'll let you know what we think is really good for their park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kathleen Lopez, J.C. This is what a mayor is supposed to be. In 2020, I was elected mayor to initiate change. I have taken swift action to advance our residents' top priorities. We have set a new direction for the city and addressed residents' priorities that were ignored for too long. Under my leadership, we have passed policies to guard against overdevelopment in order to protect the quality of life. We have initiated multiple projects to improve water quality and protect our environment. We have invested in public safety and corrected longstanding wage issues for our first responders. U.S. World and News Report has ranked Naples number one safest city in the country. I have, we have aligned the budget with our residents' priorities. We are asking for you to do the same.
Hi, I'm Jay Higgins from Northwest Cape. First, I just want to give a thanks out to our street people out there and fixing the potholes. I've noticed that some of the roads that I drive are being repaired, and I do appreciate that. And I know this might not be under your purview, but is there any update on burnt store completion from Van Buren to Charlotte County? It's a very dangerous stretch of road. I'm sure you know, Councilman Long, as you live up in that area, it's dark, it's dangerous, the quality of the road's not very good, and I'd like to see something happen. I know there's a street light going on Vincent there, which is at the Charlotte County line, but I'd like to know if there's any plans on getting that back to four lanes like it needs to be. I'd like to see an update on where we're at on the parks bond. When you all have a chance, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see also what assessments might be upcoming. I attended and watched the budget workshop, and I know there were some assessments that were being considered, and I'd like to know the status and where we're at with that as well. And lastly, I'd like to talk about the consent agenda. And I'm not against the consent agenda, but I think the consent agenda has a tendency to get people in trouble because public input is stifled. And I think that's what we're seeing here with this meeting. In the past meetings, people don't feel like they're being heard, and when there's the consent agenda, no one can discuss anything. You don't get any input from the citizens. So I propose to the council that citizens should be allowed to pull items off the consent agenda for discussion. I think you should consider that. I think it'd do well to increase communication, and maybe there won't be so many hard feelings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Rudy Bodnick. I live in District 1. I wrote a few things down because if I speak off cuff, my language could get out of hand. But let's go back in time. When changes to J.C. Park were first proposed, your questions should have been, "Why? Is the park unused? Is it underused? Do the citizens of Cape Coral or the visitors hate that park? Do the taxpayers of Cape Coral want to spend $12 million plus to change the park? Are there problem areas in Cape Coral where that money could be put to better use? How can I line my pockets with this project?" Oops, I thought I deleted that question. I go to J.C. Park five or six days a week and never see any of yous there. One of yous said he wouldn't mind bringing his grandson there if he can get a beverage. My suggestion is bring a bottle of water or a flask. You only see a few of us that show up at these meetings, and you're very dismissive. We're told by one of yous, "I'm only one of seven, but you're our guy," and you say nothing. How about listening to what we say and repeat them to your people? There's a petition going around, and we're part of it, and we're going, talking to citizens and visitors, and what's being said about you guys on the street is not too nice. The last meeting, one of you guys boasted about taking a course on budgets. I'm all for schooling. How about the class, "What It Means to Be a Public Servant"? All of you should attend that class. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Being that he stopped early, can I use his time, too?
Sir, you get three minutes.
I'm surprised you said that. I'll hold this. I'm Dave Kalish. I live in Cape Coral. I've been here plenty of times. This is like, it's like a broken record scene for us to come up here, and everybody has legitimate and really good complaints, and they all take the time to think it through and promote it in a professional way, and yet it's like we'll be back here another 85 times doing the same thing. I don't know that you guys will, but we're going to be. You people, oh, wow, sorry. You people, council and mayor, have created a negative reverberation through the whole state of Florida, including Tallahassee. That's something you guys could be really proud of. And that's a fact. I'm not just making it up. When you recognize someone from the city, I find it embarrassing that you obviously, you don't even really care, or if you do, it's amazing how you have to read off of a paper, word for word. When I used to run a business, I used to know about the person and treat them like they actually cared. And it's obvious because you treat everybody in the city like you don't care. So you could see reverberates all over the place. The stipend, we've talked about the stipend probably 453 million times, okay? It's not right. You shouldn't have done it, okay? While you guys are all okay with it is fine, but I guarantee you, you may have won that battle, you're not winning the war. It's harder for the people who live here to speak while you people sit up there so high and mighty. That's how it feels. When we come out here, people are nervous, people are not comfortable with doing this, okay? But it's hard for us to do it. But we still come out here because we're so concerned with the problems that you guys have created. When you removed the budget and the CRA committee, it was kind of, it's an obvious reason why, you know, you sit and you say, "Well, why would they do that?" The only reason something like that would be removed is if there's something deceitful going on. I'm sorry, and that's the way that I feel, and I'm sure there are lots of others. They did it with eight of them, oh, this is with the decision to do J.C. Park. Because someone brought up a good question earlier. I'm running out of time. They did it with eight of them because they knew no one in the city would vote to approve doing it. Another deceitful, around-the-back-door job, okay? And that's really about all I got. I'm kind of, I'm disgusted with all of you, for a good reason, I feel.
Julia Tari, Cape Coral residents. I asked last meeting, I asked the meeting before, and I asked the meeting before that, when you're going to review the decisions you made when Patty Cummings was District 4. There was a lot of votes taken. She was a deciding vote on many things, and by her not being in that seat, you know legally you're supposed to redo those. And we still haven't gotten an answer. That comes to the question as to citizens' input. Most people ask, "Why do we have citizens' input?" Because once you shut it down after 60 minutes, you don't answer any questions that are asked of you. Nobody. You just go on to business, and that's the end of it. So citizens' input has just become a bitch session, excuse my language, rather than input. And again, I sent another letter to the governor's office this week wanting to know when you're going to be held accountable for all of you. And Mr. Long is an attorney and an officer of the court. You should have reported the incident before you swore her into District 4, and you didn't. So I'd like to know the answer to that question.
Hello, Tom Shadrack, permanent resident, Cape Coral. My main focus here is to talk about the yacht club. I've been sending some emails to the council, to the city manager, to get some answers. I know several of you went to Tallahassee to talk to the permitting people about what's going on. You said that made some headway. We really aren't getting any feedback. I know a year or so ago, you put a standing meeting on the council for permitting and the yacht club because it was an important topic. I've asked that you put the yacht club as a standard discussion item at every council meeting so we can get a status of where we are. There's a lot of moving parts on the yacht club, whether it's permitting, the demolition, funding for it, a schedule of when we can expect things, what's FEMA have to do with anything? Have those type of things discussed every two weeks at your meeting so the city, with our number-one attraction, when we're getting that back and what's going on? We want to know. And there's, last September, I think one of the council members said, "If you guys, city residents, write to the city council through your group text or group email, you'll get a response." I tested that since September. I think I've written four or five general questions to the council. Not one time was I receiving a response. And that goes for the city manager as well. Questioned him directly on several things, absolutely no response. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? CNN Citizens Input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, I just wanted to address the last speaker about the yacht club community park updates. I'm looking at the city's website, and it shows the most recent update as of January 17th, where it shows the new stuff that we know. So we have discussions on it. We have new plans. It is in the works, so those are on there. They're available for anyone to see. As well as the gentleman earlier, Larry, about the House bill. I did put a reach out to our delegates in Tallahassee to ask about it. I know it doesn't affect our city, which we were told by our city attorney and police, but I did reach out to them to find out some more information, so I'm looking into that. And then, as far as Mr. Higgins, getting an update on Gobon Parks and stuff, that is part of our agenda item for next week's Cal meeting. So there should be some presentations posted online soon that you can review, and I know the Cal meeting is in the morning on Wednesdays, but they do record, and you could see staff presentation on that. So, thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Just a few things. One, I think Ms. Jenner has left, I think, but I absolutely agree with her comments as it relates to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I do not pause. The issue around House bill, home rule, is being challenged in a variety of ways, many, many ways. And I would tell you that being involved with Florida League of Cities, it is one of the biggest items that comes to our attention in our advocacy. of the biggest items that comes to our attention in our advocacy for municipalities and for governing. As Tallahassee tries to take control of many things at that hub, we fight for leaving the decisions made at local levels. So it's not just that House bill, but certainly that one is important. There are others that are, that are under attack as well.
Ma'am, ma'am, please, please do not speak out.
The, I'm just, I don't want to put anybody on the spot and city manager, you're the one that I am, but is there a quick answer on the Pelican Eldorado traffic control?
Yeah, there are no plans for Pelican and Eldorado for a traffic signal at this time. It is possible that our IT department and Lee County DOT were running fiber optic down Cape Coral Parkway. We do have an interlocal agreement with them to run conduit and fiber optic table to help improve the speed and the operations of traffic signals. So it's possible that some of whoever was trying to communicate that got crossed somewhere.
Okay, thank you. And as it relates to the Hawthorne aquifer, there is a lot of misinformation out there about it. Just because something is said doesn't mean that it's true. And so our, our utility department, along with South Florida Water Management, is monitoring that aquifer extremely closely, literally on a weekly basis, looking at the, at the volume of water that runs through that aquifer, the amount of water that's being accessed from it. And, and right now it is, let's call it in a yellow zone, it is not in a danger zone right now, but if it starts moving in that direction, and if you've been to our, our COW meeting last week and you take a look at some of the decisions that are being made as it relates to water restrictions and, and the availability and to make sure that there are water, there is water available for the wells that are currently there and for others that would be permitted, that is being watched on a very, very regular basis. And so I would, I would just be careful with some of the information that you hear out And as it relates to comments after citizens' input, anytime we can do some of the things that you've seen so far, we can, it's not meant to be a debate, but if we can bring some quick answers or get some assistance on some questions that were, that were asked, we'll do that, at least I'll do that anytime that we can. But it's, it's not, it's not meant to be a debate. That's not what citizens' input and then comments regarding citizens' input is about. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna echo some of what councilmember Stanky said about the interaction during citizen input. I've been here two months, I've listened to every word that's been said during that time. Not every time do you feel it appropriate to make comment. I don't think there's any value in it. What I can say to you is I give you an invitation. I think the meaningful, meaningful conversations and true interaction between your council members, at least with myself, is to have it either one-on-one or in small groups. It's very difficult to express opinions and have meaningful conversation from the dais. It's very impersonal, it's very official, and that's much of the reason I don't respond after citizens' input. There's a lot of heightened emotion and I completely understand and respect that. And I'm willing to meet with anyone that wants to ask to meet with me, given the schedule of conflicts that we both may have, but I've met with several persons in the community since I've taken office and continue to do that. And just one brief thing about the comment made about the, about my reasons for not taking the stipend. I certainly didn't make it a calculated political statement three weeks after taking the appointed office. I did it solely because of my personal belief system and the backup that was provided to me about the stipend. I thought my actions spoke for themselves about where I stand on the issue and there will be an opportunity to speak more about that as we go forward because it's being presented in the future, hopefully for a referendum discussion. That'll be the venue where I can fully voice my opinions to the public. But I just wanted to say that I'm not here for political reasons. I took this position because I felt it was the right thing to do at the time. I also committed to running in November only because I felt the continuity for the office was important. So I certainly didn't do, not take the 40,000 stipend for political tactics. I just, I need to make that clear because my name was said specifically. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cosin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, on that note, on the note of citizens' input, it's, it's not a two-way dialogue. Well, it is two-way, but it's not an argument, it's not a debate. And so I often, well, I always listen, but I don't often speak after citizens' input unless I have something new or useful to say. I don't just speak for the sake of hearing myself talk. So, but generally speaking, it's easier to get help from me through email versus citizens' input, just because then I have the ability to do research and respond rather than getting back to you on the spot. So just so citizens are aware, that's the best way for me to be able to help you. I respond to 99% of my emails. In fact, to the gentleman who said that he didn't get a response from any of us, I'm looking at one from January 23rd. So I, we do respond. And finally, I have a question for the city attorney. The question about reviewing all the votes from the former council member, can you talk about that?
So in reference to that statement that was made, there is no legal obligation, as it stands right now, to reconsider any of the votes that were taken while the council member was, was on the dais. So that is not an accurate statement.
There, just, I couldn't hear you very well, so I think you said there's no legal obligation.
There's no legal obligation, so the statement that there is one is not accurate under Florida law.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to say what some of my other council members said. I'm at my office all the time. If any of you are passionate about a particular subject and you want to have more conversation, you can call and meet with me during the week. We can schedule an appointment and have that conversation. I also have a city cellphone that you can call me on and be glad to talk to anyone. And I do that daily. But thank you for coming to the meeting. Thank you for having a good meeting today. And thank you for being passionate about our city and caring. I understand a lot of you are very passionate about the different subjects you talk about and I could appreciate that. And we do listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, Mr. Higgins, I think you had asked about the Front Store Road extension. And I will tell you, we just last week had a meeting with the Lee County Metropolitan Planning Organization in Charlotte County. We had a joint meeting and that was a topic of discussion. That is a priority not only for Charlotte County but for Lee County. So we are trying to push that particular project forward. We have also in attendance was Florida Department of Transportation. They understand that that is a priority, so, you know, if it was me, it would be done tomorrow or yesterday, but we're trying to at least get in to the schedule, to get the PD&E study completed and get that project moving forward. So we are working diligently with that. Lastly, my other comment was, like some of my colleagues, citizens' input is just that, input from the citizens. It's, it's not a dialogue between the council and the citizen who is providing the input. The time for that really is the one-on-one meetings that some of us have mentioned here today. Pick the phone up, call your council member, call me, whomever it may be, set up an appointment. You can call our office and then you could have, you're not, you're not bound by that three-minute clock. We can have that two-way conversation. And I think that would serve everyone here better if we move forward in that fashion. Sure, come, express your concern at citizens' input. I don't want you to be offended that we are not engaging in a two-way conversation. First of all, that's against our, our rules, but more importantly, there's still not enough time to accurately be able to discuss whatever your topic may be. So I would encourage you to reach out to your council member or to my office and I'm sure any seven, or I'm sorry, eight of us that are sitting here will gladly meet with any citizen that requests to have a meeting. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Real briefly, Mr. City Attorney, you piqued my curiosity with the statement that you had made in response to Councilwoman Cosin's request for information regarding our obligations or lack thereof for the action or review for the former council member on the votes while she was sitting in that office. The qualifier, in my opinion, that we made was right now. I just want to make the record clear, does that mean that if there was some further action or development in that case, that that answer would change?
It might.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record, that our official statement was not, "No, we don't."
As it stands right now, under the law, in the event that there is an acquittal, she could in fact be reinstated to that seat and that is, that is modern jurisprudence as we sit here today. And I think I've made that known to you all in the past.
You did, I just wanted to make sure for the record that that distinction was made.
And in the event that things were to change, I'll provide the appropriate legal guidance to you all, but as it stands right now, the statement that was made by the individual was completely inaccurate.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, no other lights on, we'll move on to Item 9 is Business, 9A is the Consent Agenda. I now open up the Consent Agenda for council to pull any specific items or if there's no items to be pulled, see the city manager's light on, we'll go to him first and then I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to put on the record that Item 9, Resolution 60-24, is being modified to remove any reference to any positions covered by the collective bargaining agreement with IU PAT. What will remain is only the non-bargaining elements under that resolution for your consideration.
Mr. City Attorney?
So my recommendation is that this be pulled, that you all take action on the remainder of the consent agenda and then I could assist, if there is an interest to move forward with what was stated by the city manager, I could assist you in that motion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and pull Resolution 60-24 for further discussion. The remaining items, any other items we need to pull or do I have a motion for the remaining items?
Motion to approve the balance.
Second.
Okay, it sounds like we have a motion and a second to approve the remaining items excluding Resolution 60-24. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Stanky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I'll give you the floor regarding Resolution 6024, either yourself or the city attorney.
Again, so in this, with this item, we received a, a letter from the, the General Union, International Union of Painters and Allied Trades. As a result of that letter, we will be, we are removing the, any impacts to the general employees bargaining unit positions and their ranges. So we will only be, we are only advancing the non-bargaining positions and grades this evening.
Mr. City Attorney?
So if there is a, an interest to move forward with that, the motion would essentially go like this. It would be a, a motion approving Resolution 60-24 as it solely and exclusively pertains to the non-bargaining portion of that resolution and all other, all other aspects of it that pertain to the union is excluded.
Okay, with that being said, I'll open up for any discussion or a motion for Resolution 60-24.
I make a motion as outlined by the city attorney to approve Resolution 60-24 solely for the purpose of approving the non-bargaining portion of the resolution, if that's accurate enough.
And you could adopt my, what I stated.
Adopting what the city attorney described as the appropriate motion.
Second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Stanky.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 9B, Appointments to Boards. We don't, not have anything listed. Mr. City Attorney, your.
Apologize, yeah, for the record, I will be doing an after-the-fact resolution as reflected by you all during the approval of this matter. That will be submitted to the city clerk tomorrow. That will encapsulate all that.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Item 9C, Unfinished Business. C1 is follow-up items for council, nothing listed. Item 9D is new business, none listed, personnel actions, none listed, petitions to council, none listed, follow-up items for city management. Mr. City Manager, you have any follow-up items?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 10, Ordinances and Resolution. 10A is public hearing, quasi-judicial hearings. We will start with Resolution 50-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 50-24, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Cobalt Canal right-of-way adjacent to lots 1 and 2, block 146, Cape Coral, Unit 4, Part 2. Property located at 5302 Cobalt Court, providing an effective date.
This is a, well, before I go into that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Briefly, if there's any ex parte communications, this will be the opportune time for those to be disclosed pursuant to our, our ordinances, if there are any.
Any ex parte communications?
No.
Seeing none, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in and I'll.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For the record, Candace Ford, Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. I will be speaking on Resolution 50-24 this evening. The applicants are going to be Robert and Nella Belza. The location is going to be 5302 Cobalt Court. The request is that they are asking for the vacation of 183.21 square feet of canal right-of-way adjacent to lots 1 and 2, block 146, Unit 4, Part 2, Cape Coral subdivision. The goal is to extend their property line down to their seawall, whereas currently it does not extend that far. The location of the subject parcel is going to be outlined in red and is going to be in the southeast portion of the city. As you can see based on the graphic in front of you, all sites within 500 feet are currently zoned R1 for single-family residential. A little bit of background about the site, it's currently roughly 11,465 square feet as previously shown with pretty much predominantly R1 zoning. The site does abut Cobalt Canal, which has a platte width of 80 linear feet. And the site currently does have an approved building permit for a single-family home. There is about a third of the inspections currently completed at this time. Some of the criteria discussed in Land Development Code for Section 3.4.5 is going to be that the proposed area to be vacated was originally intended to be part of the Cobalt Canal. However, that is not the case. Since it is a narrow area, it is only the 183.21 square feet. The location does not really have any foreseeable future for transportation, access, water management or utility functions. And the applicant is actually not proposing to vacate the underlying easements underlying the canal right-of-way. Those will be retained so the city will still have their perimeter easement around the site. And all three utility providers did provide letters of no objection. Of course, LCEC does require that a continuous easement be provided around the perimeter site, which is currently being retained. This will be consistent with the comprehensive plan, even with the slight expansion of the site. It will only bring the square footage to 11,649 square feet, so that will only have 3.78 dwelling units per acre with that calculation. The maximum is 4.4, so they still are okay. For recommendation, planning staff does recommend approval with conditions of the vacation and this did go before the hearing examiner December 19th of 2023 and she also recommended approval with conditions. I did receive two phone calls regarding this case, but they were just inquiries, they were not for or against the case in any way. And I will stand by with any questions.
Thank you, Rue. Is there any testimony from the applicant? Is the applicant here today regarding this issue?
They aren't.
Okay, seeing none, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 50-24? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on Resolution 50-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, is there a graphic that shows the 183... Is there a graphic that shows the one hundred and eighty-three foot portion of this that we're talking about on that site? I may have, I don't think I missed it, but I just wanted to ask.
It is not in this presentation, no.
Could you just kind of describe for me where the, where the one hundred and eighty-three square feet is coming from?
The one hundred and eighty-three square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Let me try to zoom in as close as I can. So it's going to be, if you can see where my cursor is, it's going to be just along here.
Okay, so will this improve, this will give a greater area for development on the parcel?
Correct.
Will it also increase the marine improvement area or will that stay the same?
The, that should stay the general same because they still have their marine improvement currently. They do have a seawall and a small dock, from my understanding. The intent from the applicant was to extend the property line so they could get that additional two feet for a pool, is what I was told.
Thank, thank you very much.
Is this similar to what we used to call quick claims?
Yeah.
And just for some background, Councilmember Carr, there are some parcels throughout the city where the seawall is, where if you look at the plat of the property, it doesn't go out to the seawall. Before, we used to do what's called quick claims, but we've changed that process to the process that we have here. So you could have one, two feet of your property line that is, you know, identified through a survey, but you could have another two feet of property out to your, to your seawall. So this is something that's done commonly, or it has been in the past. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I, I appreciate that, and it has been common. Actually, I've seen another case like this since I've been here, and there was a graphic depicting that it was very clear and I didn't need to ask the question, but the way it was worded, I just wanted to see if it entered into the canal itself.
No, sir.
And that's why I asked the question about the marine improvement area. So I do appreciate that, Mayor, as well.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item ten B, legislative public hearings. We have ordinance ten dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ten dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, authorizing and directing the city manager or their designee to enter into a permissive use agreement with the United States Army Reserve, Three Hundred and Sixty-Fifth Engineer Company for a portion of property owned by the City of Cape Coral, Florida, as described herein. Property located at twenty-nine twenty Burnt Store Road North, together with adjoining tracts of land to the south, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, I will turn it over to staff. Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Ordinance ten dash twenty-four authorizes the temporary use of the city's property on Burnt Store Road by the United States Army Reserve, Three Hundred and Sixty-Fifth Engineer Company for military training exercises one weekend a month, beginning this weekend through June of this year, with no training exercises in the month of April. I have an overhead to show you. It's acreage property located on Burnt Store Road. Maybe? Thank you, Betty. I hit that one, but that's probably the wrong one. Thank you. This area is about a half a mile north of Kismet Parkway. Kismet Parkway is down here on the south, Burnt Store Road over here. This is some acreage land, undeveloped. They'll be performing military exercises within that area of the Red Square. I can stand by for questions.
Okay, now open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ten dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance ten dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Councilmember Long.
Real briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. City Manager, you had mentioned in the past that these exercises have been relatively routine on this. Do you happen to know, because I don't recall doing this in the last year or two, as far as authorizing something like this. When was the last time that they conducted such exercises in that area?
Two years ago.
That is my timeline. Okay, perfect. And there have not been any issues from any residents in that?
No, there, there's no ordinance or any live, live weapon firing. It's, it's mostly ground and surveying, mapping, how to get from point to point. It's, it's, so we have not had any complaints or issues with them using it in the past.
Perfect, yep. I have no objection to it. Just wanted to make sure that I was knowledgeable in case one of the residents in that area had asked. Thank you, sir.
Okay, see, no other discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Move on to ordinance eleven dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance eleven dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving an agreement for the two thousand twenty-three slash two thousand twenty-four hurricane legislative appropriation program, the hurricane program, between the City of Cape Coral, Florida and the State of Florida, Division of Emergency Management, in order to provide funding for hurricane repairs and recovery due to Hurricane Ian and Hurricane Nicole, authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute the agreement and any related documents, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, this item is to designate myself and somebody to be an applicant for the, the program for CDBDR. And so with the approval tonight, that will allow us to actually put in planning applications for the, the funding.
Okay, I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance eleven dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance eleven dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Item ten C is introductions, starting with ordinance twelve dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title set to public hearing date.
Ordinance twelve dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, Administration, Division two, Utility Capital Expansion Fee, Section two dash twenty-four point three, Fee imposed and time of payment, which establishes the existing North One East Utility Expansion Area Fee Legacy Rate Table and updating the Utility Capital Expansion Fee Tables for all other areas of the city that shall not be encapsulated within North One East Utility Expansion Fee Table. An amending Section two dash twenty-four point six, Review of Fee Structure, which sets forth the statutory reference mandated within Section one six-three point three-one-eight-zero-one of the Florida statutes, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be March sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, reports. Councilmember Carr, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just that, I'd like to say congratulations and thank you to John Bishaw, receiving our nomination to represent us at the CDBG Recovery Grant Program. I think he's an excellent choice. I look forward to hearing his input and representing us well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Cosdine.
No report.
Councilmember Hayden?
No report.
Councilmember Long?
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, report. I just wanted to say thank you to the, the volunteers that, that help our police department and the fire department and other, other areas of the city. We, we appreciate everything you do for the community. It's pretty amazing. I, I witness people that have volunteered for over twenty years, and we have to really be thankful for people like that. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you, yes. February eighth, I attended the Tourist Development Council meeting and just hats off again to our Department of Economic Development. They have been making a presentation at every meeting for the Lee County Tourist Development Council, and that is where the decisions are made to bring dollars to our community to help attract both tourism as well as the commercial entities that will help our city move forward. So a tremendous job. I know our communications department helps put together a great PowerPoint for that. So we, we show extremely well there and great appreciation, being our representative there, to have that team with me there every time we have a meeting. On the thirteenth of February, I attended the governor's press conference where he announced a statewide crackdown on retail theft. There's many places in our country where retail theft is just ruining businesses and ruining cities, and the governor's taking a firm stance to make sure that that does not happen in Florida. And he chose to make that announcement here in Cape Coral, and that was great. Ashley Moody was here as well, you know, speaking in concert with him in that effort. And so I was really pleased to be able to, to attend that. Of course, on the fourteenth, we had our committee, the whole meeting. I attended the police volunteer appreciation luncheon today. Just for everyone's at a vacation, we've got about eighty-five volunteer Cape Coral Police Department volunteers. You'll see them on the road, you'll see them helping with traffic. They help out administratively. They literally save the city about a million dollars a year because of their dedication and contribution to Cape Coral Police Department and our city. And some of them, like Councilmember Shepherd said, have been there twenty to thirty years, and they gave out the awards today at the luncheon. So it was great to see all of them there. And for those listening at home and those here, they are looking for more volunteers. There was a time when we had about a hundred and forty. So we can certainly use some more. So for those that want to contribute to the community and help out Cape Coral's finest, certainly see CCPD to see how you might be able to volunteer. And I know this is not a CRA meeting, but I would like to take the opportunity, since all CRA commissioners are here. We were trying to set a date for a CRA workshop, and two, two dates came available, but it's tight timing. And so I wanted to get, find out if there was a conflict with anyone while we're all here together. For February twenty-ninth and March first, if we can meet, the, the new rehabbed, if you will, CRA headquarters is prepared for us to have our workshop there. But we need to know now whether that can work or not. I realize it's tight, and if we can't do it then, that's fine. Everybody's got calendars and, and issues, so. But if, if you can check your calendars real quick, if we can do the twenty-ninth and, and March first, it's a Thursday and Friday.
That's next Thursday and Friday.
Next Thursday and Friday, next week.
Okay. All right, well, on that topic, I guess we'll start with Councilmember Cosdine and go down the line. That is a little bit of short notice, but we'll see, see if, I think it's important that all of us are there.
For sure.
So if one of us, for one reason or another, can't make those two days, I think we, it would be more beneficial to push it off, to make sure that all eight of us can attend and participate in that workshop. With that being said, Councilmember Cosdine.
I hate to be that guy, but I do have a doctor's appointment on the Friday at twelve. So I could leave and come back, I don't know.
Okay.
We'll just put it off then. Well, I, I know it's tight, but we were, we only found out as of today that it could be done, so we'll, we'll work for a different date with more notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds great.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report, but I did have one question I want to bring up. I spoke with our office manager, which happens to be the mayor, about some, basically like some marketing materials that I was thinking maybe we could purchase as a council to give out at some of these events that we go to, whether it be a parade or whether it be a speaking engagement, whether it be some sort of marketing chop ski or, or a thing like that. And he asked me to, to bring it up to you guys, to see if there was a consensus. Maybe I could work with the communications department, order some things that are marketing specifically towards council. We do get some negative press, we get some positive press, but I think having some things to hand out and give to residents when we're, when we're speaking places might be, might be good. So I just want to get a consensus from everyone, if that's something they'd be interested in letting me tackle. I could bring back a few different items or ideas at a cow meeting, or if you just want me to work with the office manager on it. I don't think it's anything too important, but just want to get feedback before I go spending time on it.
Yeah, you know, for the record, I know Connie Grigland came to me earlier today, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the requests was, I guess you were going to be attending the pride parade and you wanted to hand out some candy. I know we've never done that in the past, as far as using tax dollars to purchase candy to hand out. So at that time, I told Connie, and then you elaborated a little further, maybe something more than candy for the future. And I just, I thought it would be prudent to bring this discussion up and make a decision. And we can do that at a cow meeting if you'd like, if you want to bring back some ideals. We've never done it in the past. I wasn't going to take it upon myself, since we haven't set a precedent in the past of doing that, I was uncomfortable to approve that and move the purchase of candy. I know I've, I bought candy myself at the veterans' parade and handed out, but I purchased that for myself. His was, request was for the use our budget in order to do that. So I felt a little uncomfortable with that. If that's a direction that collectively as a council, we want to go in that direction, fine, but he even elevated it to maybe something else over and above the candy, so.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily thinking just candy. I know when we do the veterans' parade, Jay Gansey Jeep and Dodge gave us, you know, a bunch of teddy bears to throw out, they gave us koozies, things like that, and, and you really, a lot of people enjoy that. And I just think something marketed, either even not just for council, maybe as CRA representatives now too, to promote the CRA, we could maybe look at that budget and see if there's something we could purchase to advertise a CRA as well. So it's just, I'm just looking to expand some information. I could work with Melissa on it too, to get some ideas from her, because I know she does a lot for the city in that aspect.
Yeah, for me, I have no problem trying to get some ideals and bring it back, maybe to a cow meeting. Once you have some ideals, I think that we could maybe have that discussion then, try to hear your thoughts, what your, what type of items you're, you're thinking. You know, so I have no, no problem having that discussion at a future time, once you've identified exactly what you want to do. Councilmember Carr?
If we're going to have the discussion later, that's fine. I was just going to say, I think these items already exist in the city at various departments. Maybe we could just add on to their numbers, maybe personalize them a little bit for city council, but I, I don't necessarily want to go shopping and reinvent the wheel from a marketing perspective for our city. I think these things already, I've, I've seen them as an employee here, I've seen them as a council member, they have various functions. Maybe we could just add to the numbers with some of our budget dollars and put some of our nomenclature on them instead of other departments' nomenclatures. So we can probably simplify it a little bit that way. I think these things are already in place that we could just tap into, but that's, we can discuss it further, but that's my opinion.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, very similar light to what Councilman Carr said. I don't know that I'd have a desire to reinvent the wheel, so to speak. I think marketing the city is much more important to me than marketing council. I'm on council and I've got no desire to personally hold any memorabilia or items related to council. I'm not sure there's a desire for that in the public. I'm not sure there's a desire for that in the public. Uh, and then, and then again, as far as juice being worth the squeeze, you talk about, in, in the mayor's instance, I guess in this, uh, in respect to the pride parade, for example, if one individual is there throwing out items representing council, um, then it becomes a discussion of whether council, uh, wanted that particular item to be distributed at that particular event, and who and what and where it's distributed, um, especially if it's given by one particular individual. Uh, uh, for that reason, I think it's Pandora's box that I'd, I'd rather have closed. So, thank you.
Councilmembers, Steinke.
Thank you. Just, um, just a suggestion. It'd be great if we have it at a COW, we can throw out some ideas. I, I've mentioned a, a few times in a couple meetings that it'd be great to have, like, a, a twenty, twenty-three accomplishments. And then I think many times we get lost, or, um, people don't recognize all that was done, uh, the, the amazing accomplishments, um, that have been made, the number of parks that have been opened, that, all of those things. So if there, if there were something, if we were going to go to an event, either collectively or individually, that we could distribute those types of things to, to remind everyone about all the great things that our city has and the things have, that have been delivered, um, I think, I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to do something like that, when, when you say marketing or, or, or whatever, because the pudding's in the pudding. And so if we can distribute the pudding, which is all the things that have been done and the advancements that have been made, I think that, I think that will help more than anything.
Yeah, and I didn't, you know, I didn't even think about what Councilmember Long had stated. I think we have to be very careful, um, because if we have certain council members out handing out, whatever they may be handing out, I want to make sure it's not a direct representation of all of us as a council, because we may or may not agree with either the event that you're at, or whatever the, the item is that we're handing out. So I think it's a slippery slope that we have to be careful with. Um, you know, and I kind of look at the, uh, uh, you know, uh, and we've, we've gotten a lot of discussions on stipends, and this is something that I think we could utilize our stipend for, for, if you want to buy candy or, or small gifts, but I think we need to be careful, uh, unless it's something specific to, you know, uh, maybe s- some achievements that we've accomplished last year, uh, as a city as a whole that you want to put. Uh, but I would be, uh, probably not in support to have something that just says city council, that one particular council member's out handing out. The other council members may or may not agree, so I think that's just, uh, a slippery slope we, we better be careful with. Uh, Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I believe we have a communications department that does a great job, and I, I think we can give them ideas, like, we can give them the idea of the, the accomplishments, the thinkable way to put that out to the public, but I, I think they do a good job, and I think we should stay out of that.
And that's something, uh, Councilmember Welsh, you may, may, you know, I have no problem if you're working with communications, they may, uh, like Councilmember Carr said, that, you know, that's, that's their department, uh, and, uh, maybe, maybe you can have some suggestions that, uh, that, that you bring forward, that, uh, we have a discussion on, and then, then bring back, and we can add that as a COW topic of discussion.
Yeah, I'll talk with them to see what they have around the city as well. As Councilmember Carr said, maybe they already have something printed and made up that's been sitting in the closet for a couple of years that we could distribute or use, um, for certain events like that. So, I'll, I'll certainly reach out to Melissa and work with her team. Uh, and that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, just real quickly, uh, some events that I attended, uh, since our last meeting. Um, as a guest speaker and kicked off the spring seminar, the Citizens Academy here in, uh, Cape Coral, I think we had about, uh, twenty individuals, if I recall correctly, uh, that signed up and are participating in that, the move forward the next several weeks. Again, it's a, it's a great forum to, uh, for residents to learn the inner workings of the city. Uh, also attended the Governor DeSantis's, uh, press conference on retail theft, uh, penal penalties. Uh, also attended the fire department, uh, recognition ceremony with, uh, several of my colleagues. Uh, again, that's, that's another, uh, great, uh, event that we have each and every year, uh, where we recognize, uh, the individuals that are, are being, uh, promoted or for any special recognition. So, uh, another great job, Chief Lamb. Uh, also attended, uh, like I had mentioned earlier, along with some of my colleagues, the NPO Metropolitan Planning Organization joint meeting, uh, with, uh, Charlotte and Punta Gorda, uh, board members. Uh, again, that just shows that collaborative effort, uh, between Charlotte County and Lee County on transportation, regional transportation, uh, issues. Uh, also, uh, presented a proclamation at the annual, uh, Saint Vincent Walk for the Poor at Saint Andrews Church. I think this is the third year, uh, that they've had this event, and it's my third year in attendance. Uh, again, uh, if I recall correctly, last year, uh, they, uh, actually helped in assistance up to about, uh, or raised about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, so that was, that was great, great to hear, uh, helping some of the needy in the community. Uh, so it's a great organization if, uh, someone's looking, uh, to contribute to. Uh, also, uh, attended C-TAC meeting this morning and the police volunteer luncheon. Uh, you know, the, the police volunteer, uh, program we have here in the city saves us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, it was well-attended here this morning. Uh, I noticed that, uh, one of the individuals, um, had over fourteen hundred hours of volunteer time that he had, uh, contributed to the city last calendar year. You know, there's two thousand and eighty hours in a forty-hour work week, fifty-two weeks out of the year. So that individual, uh, did about seventy-five percent of that, so that was pretty amazing, uh, just on a volunteer basis. Um, and that's all I have. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Briefly, uh, to provide you the current update in regards to where the Chiquita lock is, I'm expecting at this, at any point in time, that the, that the entire hearing will be transcribed. I know. Uh, I'm also then, uh, going to, uh, they're going to make sure that all the exhibits and all, everything is accurately included in there, because there was, it was a document-intensive matter. At that point in time, will be submitted to the ALJ, and then, of course, proposed orders will come shortly thereafter. So, I'll keep you up to date, but that's, that's the latest and greatest as we stand right now. I, I unfortunately don't have any control over the transcription. I don't. Wish I did.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three announcements for, uh, future events. So Friday, February twenty-third at ten AM, we're going to be having a groundbreaking for Crystal Lake Park. Again, that's Friday, February twenty-three at ten AM at Crystal Lake Park. On Friday, March eighth, from nine AM to noon, we're going to be having a vendor forum. This is, uh, something that procurement has initiated that will help prospective vendors who want to learn to be, uh, a vendor of the city and do business with the city, uh, can come and meet and determine how they can get their business signed up, what they would need to submit in order to become a vendor, and learn how to register their business with that. So we're pushing this out, um, in order to try and get, uh, more interaction with our local businesses and help get them to be a, a vendor for the city of Cape Coral, to increase our bids and how we would do business in the city. And then lastly, um, um, March ninth, from nine to three PM, at eight fifteen Nicholas Parkway in the Public Works Annex, uh, the city's going to be hosting a first, uh, inaugural Waterways Science Festival, and the idea here is to have a family-friendly event that will include educational opportunities and games that will focus all about the importance of, uh, Cape Coral's waterways. There will be, uh, animals, uh, mangroves and plant giveaways, arts and crafts, uh, some laboratory tours of what our, um, water folks do that volunteer to, uh, perform canal watch. Uh, there'll be some food trucks and, uh, some other items that, uh, would be announced during that timeframe. So first annual, uh, Waterways Science Festival at the Public Works Facility, March ninth, from nine AM to three PM. That's all I have.
Okay, time and place of future meeting. We have a committee of the whole scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at nine AM, here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.